Before we begin the meeting. I would like to call to order the regular meeting for May 1st, 2014. Councilmember Taylor, will you lead us in the invocation? And then after that, can we all please rise?
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for this evening that we're able to be here tonight. We're grateful for the freedoms of this country. We're grateful for this beautiful town of Gilbert, the wonderful citizens and families that we can associate with. We're grateful for this opportunity to organize and care for the interests in our community. We pray for those in need, that are ill, that are sick. Pray that we can make good decisions according to thy will is our prayer in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Apologize for not having the scouts up here, but come on up, boys. And our senior patrol leader, Mark, will lead us here in the pledge. So stand right up here, right up here. And then the flag's over there. So we want to kind of salute over that direction. This is good, guys.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your beloved where it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. I'm going to have you each give us your name and introduce yourselves, and then we'll give you a copy of the U.S. Constitution to help you fulfill the merit badge that you're here for tonight. So go ahead and tell us your name and your rank.
I'm Graham Fawson, Troop 582, and I am a first class.
I'm Samuel Scott. I am from Troop 582. I am a second class.
I'm Mark Christensen. I'm from Troop 82, and I'm a tenderfoot.
I am Gregory Silva, Troop 582, and I'm a tenderfoot.
I am Diego Gutierrez, and I'm Troop 582, and I'm a scout.
I'm Jane Mulder. I'm Troop 582, and I'm first class.
I'm Marshall Hancock from Troop 582, and I'm a first-class scout.
And I'm Michael Marks, the scout master of this wonderful Troop 582, and I'm an Eagle Scout.
Wonderful. What a great group. Thank you for coming down tonight, and I hope you learned something wonderful about local government. Thank you very much for being here.
Let's have a round of applause for our scouts. I just want to make a note here. The invocation may be offered by a person of any religion, faith, belief, or non-belief, as well as council members. A list of volunteers is maintained by the town clerk, and interested persons should contact the clerk for further information. With that, we'll begin with agenda item number one. And Councilmember Peterson, if you, excuse me, roll call.
Mayor Lewis. Vice Mayor Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Cooper.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Aquorum is present.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson, will you be glad to share with us the pillar of the month, caring?
My pleasure to do that. The pillar of the month is caring, and as council members and town staff, we truly care about each customer that our organization relates to both internally and externally. We are committed to building lasting relationships. We are sincerely concerned about those we serve by expressing gratitude and helping people in need.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. I would like to invite our rock star budget director, Don Irvine, to the front. We have, for the second year in a row, is it the second year in a row?
Actually, I believe it's the 16th.
Maybe the 16th. Some, some number. But our wonderful budget team has again won the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the Town of Gilbert for the 16th time. Don, would you be so glad to share with us how this all works?
Absolutely. Thank you, Vice Mayor Cook. The Distinguished Budget Presentation Award by the Government Finance Officers Association recognizes communities not only for their financial stewardship, but within the budget document, ensuring that it is a financial plan, but it's also a policy document of the councils. It's an operations guide for departments, and then a communications guide for all stakeholders, citizens, developers, and council members alike.
Well, if you can hold this award on behalf of your team, can we first all have a wonderful round of applause for our budgeting team? And your team is just so wonderful. It makes us our lives much easier. So with that, let's take a nice picture. Thank you. And Councilmember Daniels?
Thank you. Can we have the lady knights up here? As they're coming up, this is our Gilbert Christian Girls Varsity Basketball Team. Come on up here. I'm pretty sure I wouldn't make this team. They are really good. We're going to have Coach Young here. Tell us a little bit about the team and what you've accomplished this year.
This team was 29 and 5. We were sectional champions, and then we went on to, the girls went on to win the state championship for Division IV in Arizona. There's four divisions, and we were fortunate enough to pull together, and they had a great season. It was, got through some, had to persevere through some tough times, and they pulled together, and we're very blessed to have won the state championship.
We're so grateful that you guys have represented Gilbert as well as you have, and all of your efforts are very much appreciated. We have a certificate of appreciation. I'll just read it to you so you know what it all says, and then we'd like to pass the mic down and have you all introduce yourselves. The certificate says, "In recognition of her contribution to the Gilbert Christian High School Girls Varsity Basketball Team and for winning the 2014 AIA Girls Basketball Division IV State Championship, we wish to express our pride in your accomplishment and our appreciation for the fine publicity you have brought to our community through your athletic ability and inspired team play." So with that, if you'll each introduce yourself, and I'll give these certificates to your coach so he can give them out to you.
My name is Scott Finkbeiner. I'm one of the assistant coaches.
I'm Judy Martinez, one of the assistant coaches.
I'm Emily Pinkerton, a player.
Cassie Kurtner.
Meg Van Rhyn.
Lauren Zetterwitz.
Alyssa Elias.
Alethea Gross.
Riley Welch.
Colleen Young.
Taylor Finkbeiner.
And Heidi Lobs.
Thank you. If we can have a round of applause for our lady knights.
Picture time. Well, how wonderful. Agenda item number four, communications from citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town, but not on the agenda. The council response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Councilmember Ray, do we have any citizens? Okay, this will lead us into the consent calendar. All items listed below are considered consent calendar items and may be approved by a single motion unless removed by the request of the council for further discussion or action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. Councilmember Ray, do we have any items that need to be polled?
We don't. With that, I move that we approve items five, noting that item seven has been moved to the May 15th council meeting. Item eight, item 10, item 11, item 12, item 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19, and 20. 20 and 21.
Second. With all those, will you please vote?
It's way down like 31.
The point of order, the light's not working here.
You want to reset it? I can reset it, and if you please re-vote.
Please vote again. It's still not, my vote is aye. Motion passed, 6-0. Councilmember Ray, do we have another?
We do. Item number 30, we want to move up to the consent agenda. And we'll ask Councilmember Taylor for a motion on item number 30.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Cook, I'd like to move that we appoint the following individuals: Ron Coleman, Robert Farren, and Greg Hanson as three regular members with terms beginning May 13th, 2014, ending May 12th, 2017, and Mary Harris as one regular member to fill the remainder of the term ending May 12th, 2016.
Second.
Will we all please vote? Motion passed with a 6-0. We're now moving to the public hearing. Items 23 through 28 will be heard in one public hearing, at which time anyone wishing to comment on a public hearing item may do so. Comments will be heard from those in support or in opposition of the item. In order to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment form indicating the item number on which you wish to be heard. Once the hearing is closed, there'll be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the council. After the public hearing, the council may act on the items, not requiring additional staff, public, or council member comment with a single vote.
We have not received any comments.
All right, with the council, are there any items here that you would like to have further discussion? Yes, Councilmember Peterson. 28? All right, with that, I close the public hearing on agenda items 22 through 27. With that, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve items 22 through 27.
Second.
All those, please vote. Motion passed with a 6-0 vote. Moving to agenda item number 28, Councilmember Peterson.
I'm going to vote for this item, but I have to make a quick comment. This will be the second time that we've had to change or make exception to the regulations that we have in the downtown in order to build this building. And it just seems to me that people have a lot of concern about government playing by their own rules, and in this case, we have to change the rules in order to go forward. It makes me wonder about how many projects in the private sector never even make it off the ground or even fully considered because they see the regulations, they don't allow what they want, they don't have any pull with the town, they don't have a way to get it done, and so they move on to some other site or location. I just, I know that the LDC is currently under review. I know that some reductions to those, some of the regulations there are being proposed. I hope we can consider that that's an important thing to do, especially with building height in this case. You know, if it's good for our building, it should be good for other buildings. Hopefully, we can raise the height limitation so that others can have the same opportunity. With that, I'm fine with the item. I'll be happy to approve it, but just want to point that out. This will be the second time we've had to change it so we can move forward with the university.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Do I hear a motion?
Oh. Just a comment on that. Your comments are well-taken, especially as it relates to the height. And you may know that in this next year's budget, there's a discussion of funding, a study which looks at the Heritage District in general, and we're going to be talking, in fact, they've already kicked off at the Redevelopment Commission level, a discussion about vision and some of the guidelines and code that's in place. And so we certainly are, or they certainly are, looking at that with a mind to basically scrutinize all of the rules. And so I think you will be, I have no idea where it'll go, but I know that that discussion's going to be happening. And so I'm looking forward to it. And I think that we will see that, you know, as things change, we update our plans and we update our ideas about what's appropriate and marketable. And so, you know, I think we will see some of that happen. So with that, unless there's another comment, I just move, okay.
I just want to address one thing, Councilmember Peterson, that you said that I do take issue with, and that is that there's no way for someone else to get a variation or something of that effect. And in reality, we do that on a fairly regular basis where, and we do take things as a council, and the Planning Commission also does, on a case-by-case basis. If there is a variation or a need for something to be outlined as something different, and we do have a very public process that does allow that. So I don't, I don't want the message to be, you know, the private sector has no way to get these things done. They do. And we have a process that we use and that is frequently used within the town. So I understand what you're saying about us changing some of the guidelines in order to fit, but we do do that for private business. I just didn't want the message to be that we don't, so with that.
Councilmember Peterson?
I just want to respond to that. It's a good comment. It's true. People can apply. But there's no guarantees they'll get the recommendation of staff. That's a heavy thing all on its own. So if staff's not supportive, a lot of the council members may, you know, take that very seriously. So yes, there's a process, but, you know, the possibility that they're going to get shot down is very high in a lot of cases, so they may not even try it. And so I just would point that out. It's a tough thing. I've been on the other side of this issue, and so I just hope that we can start to open up a little more. I know that that's happening, and so I do appreciate your comments. But I also will say, anytime we have made exceptions to zoning, I've also recommended that we allow the same opportunity to others. Because again, there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes that we don't see as far as what determines what gets recommended or not. I don't always know sometimes, but yes, you're right. Everyone can apply for it.
Councilmember Cook? And I appreciate that, and you have been, your votes have been consistent with that, and I appreciate that as well. You just said that the chances of getting shot down are very high. Do you have some sort of statistic or something to help back up that statement? That seems like a statement without data to prove that, that maybe you had that experience personally, but I would hope that that isn't the norm. I think the Town of Gilbert is very open to business. We're very open to having conversations, and I know that our staff works extremely hard to come to a conclusion with our businesses and with our landowners that meets their needs and accommodates, you know, the land development code and other municipal code that we have in the town. So I feel a little bit differently about that. I certainly don't want the message to be that your chances of getting shut down in the Town of Gilbert or shot down are high, and that was something you just said. And without statistics to back that up, I would feel very uncomfortable if that was the message being sent from this council.
Councilmember Taylor?
Vice Mayor, I'm ready to make a motion if there's nothing else.
I probably want to close the public hearing anymore. I'd like to close the public hearing on agenda item number 28, and would entertain a motion.
I move to approve item 28.
Second. Thank you. Please vote. Thank you. Let's move into the administrative items. Administrative items are for the council discussion in action. It is to the discretion of the majority of the council regarding public input requests on any administrative items. Persons wishing to speak on administrative items should complete a request to speak for them and indicate the item they wish to address. Council may or may not accept public comments. Agenda item number 29, consider the acceptance of the budget report for the third quarter. Do we want?
So moved. Oh, sorry.
Do we want any discussion or presentation from staff?
So moved.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Please vote. Agenda item number 29, pass 6-0. Agenda item number 29A, the fees discussion. Yes, Councilmember Ray?
I only have one comment, and we've talked about this last time we discussed this item briefly. I want to, assuming it gets approved tonight, we'll have the 60-day notice on it, and then we'll have a public hearing and talk about it more. I would like to make sure that staff, I don't know that we need a full-blown fee study done, but it would be helpful to have some information as to why we come up with one of these numbers. And I'm sure, Kyle, that you guys have looked at the numbers and determined that this is the best fit. And kind of what Councilmember Cooper said last time, I do want to make sure this is cost recovery and not more and not less. And so I'm ready to vote on it, but I want to make sure that staff is doing some sort of fee study on it to make sure that it's a number that's appropriate and that we don't have to change it very often. Vice Mayor Cook, Councilmember Ray, we have, we did the math on this and came up with a 2.75. So we averaged out to see what that, the average fee that we were being charged. When we talked to you last time, we thought it would be somewhere between 3 and 3.5, and it actually came in at about 2.8, so we're moving forward with a 2.75 as the percentage. I'm ready to approve it. I'm ready for a motion, Vice Mayor. There's no other comment.
Any other discussion?
I move that we approve item 29A and...
Second. A second? Please vote. Agenda passed with a 6-0 vote. With that, that leads us to agenda item number 31, Board's Commission Report from council.
Mayor, members of, Vice Mayor, members of the council. The direction, as I understand the vote, was to post the proposed fee for the next 60 days to be brought back to the council. 2.75% credit card fee to be brought back to council in 60 days.
Okay. That's correct.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 31. Any council members would like to share any comments as it relates to the Board's Commission? Councilmember Daniels?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cook. I just wanted to make a quick statement. We voted tonight on agenda item 20, which was the health trust, and so I'm taking this quick opportunity and really to point out that because of the health of our, the health of our health trust, because of the sound financial guidance that we've received and the work of Doug Marshall and Carrie Bosley from our HR department, we are really glad that for another consecutive year, we've been able to say that there will be no increases to health premiums, both medical or dental, for town employees and their families. And I think that says something both about the ability to manage that health trust and then also the health and wellness of our employees and their families really is shocking, the people that are trying to plot and provide data for us as we make these decisions, because we just really have a very healthy population. We're grateful for that in the town and grateful for everyone's responsible use of the plan that allows us to keep those premiums low. So with that, I just wanted to give that quick report.
Well, thank you for that wonderful report. Well, thank you for that wonderful report. With that, agenda item number 32, policy items, I see none. Agenda item number 33, future meetings. Agenda item number 34, report from the town manager on current events.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cook, members of the council. I just wanted to thank the members of our digital government team. We had the award ceremony today for our second annual Spark App League competition. I've said it before, and you can go to our website at sparkleague, sparkappleague.com, and see all of the submissions, all the teams, but we had a great turnout this year. We had over 250 kids participate. We had eight apps submitted for the awards. The winner this year was from Centennial High School. It was actually an all-girls team that won the best overall app, so we were very excited. And Dana Birchman, and Alfredo Moreno, Zor Bish, Gardenia, La Madrid, the entire team just did a phenomenal job. We'll be already thinking of ideas to improve upon it for next year, and we really appreciate and thank our sponsors as well, Intel and ASU's Polytechnic College. But a great event, encourage everybody to go to our website and see the final products.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 35, report from members of the council on current events. I do want to make a quick comment. Councilmember Daniels and myself last night attended a wonderful event with the Higley School District. It was the honoring of the 2014 Teachers of the Year, and it was such a wonderful event to see these wonderful individuals win this award. They did a video presentation of each teacher from each school, from the elementary to junior high to high school, and we got a glimpse of their skills, their kindness, their passion as educators, and we, it was just a wonderful event for that. And thank you, Councilmember Daniels, for being there with me. Agenda item number 36, Mayor Lewis, I don't know where you're hiding, but this is your opportunity to speak. He's not here today. With that, I think we may have had one of the shortest meetings since I've been on board. With that, I adjourn the meeting.